The views, information and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives or its employees.
And I have a motion to accept the minutes of the regular council meeting held January twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. Counselor Johnson, Counselor Moss, all in favor? Very. Up first, under original communications delegations and petitions, we have Southeast Tech Hub, Mr. Gord Moore. Going to present all their up fine updates for us now, so the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to get you up to date with what we've been doing. And this is my first opportunity for some of the new councilors to hear what I'm actually doing. So. Interesting thing, when I booked this presentation, it was at a time when our coal plant was still scheduled to be shut down and we still had a free trade agreement with the United States. And it's amazing how much has changed since then. And when you think about what the real definition of innovation is, and that's a disruption of a process to make something supposed to be better. And we just live in this world now. When you look at the top ten most wealthiest people on the planet, whether you like them or not, they got there by being disruptors and taking advantage of innovation and taking consolidating their wealth from people who were complacent. So the cool thing about the innovation, about the tech hub, even though we're changing, there's been a lot of change, some good, some a bit rough. We give the community an opportunity to really appreciate what disruption is and give the skills to the community on how to be disruptors in a good way. Like what I've said for the last two years is let's be the disruptors, not the disrupted. So with that in mind, the Southeast Tech Hub, there's two parts about us. We're community development and we're economic development. So community development, a good example is you've probably seen Poppy, our robot, doing the Macarinka that the kids put together at the comp as well as some of the students at the college. The other part is I helped facilitate with the college bringing in Ryan Gustafson to teach computer science and worked with the college with the province so that we can finally have a computer science program. Up until then, if you took the Trans-Canada Highway south from the Alberta border to the Manitoba border, there was not a single place an adult could go to get a computer science education. And when you think that according to Stats Canada, sixty percent of all youth in rural communities leave their rural community to get an education and a job in technology and innovation. And you can validate that by just watching one of the graduation ceremonies at the comp. And as the kids walk across the stage, you will hear where they're going next. And forty percent of them to sixty percent of them are leaving to get an education in computer science or in some kind of technology. Now with the college's first cohorts, we now have eight, nine kids who decided to stay in our community and get an education. The next thing we'll know, they'll either be working for companies in our community or even creating their own and help diversifying the economy. Next slide. So actually it kind of jumped around. Next slide, please. Next slide. And excellent. So again, when we talk about diversification, the, to be a good disruptor, to handle what's going on in the world, we need to diversify. So just where, where does the tech hub sit with diversification? So everywhere between education skills, looking at your family, your workspace and community. And I walk my talk. So last year I went back and spent six months, six months in school getting myself caught up on everything, AI, engineering, that kind of things. And I, so I hope that other people will look at the world today and say, hey, even at fifty, even at sixty, got to update the education. And I can tell you, it's a lot of fun updating education when, when you don't have to worry about so much about the future per se. So the other thing I like to do is I don't like to re-event the wheel. And I also like to help you visualize what I'm talking about. So up there on the screen, that's my family. There in B.C., but two of them born and raised on reserve just outside of Kamloops. And ninety, in the nineties, B.C. allowed the community colleges to become universities. I'm not saying that's what can come here, but what did happen is a bunch of portables in Kamloops that was Caribou College became TRU University. And they have one of the best IT programs in Canada, if not Western North America. And those two did their computer science class while living on reserve or living in Kamloops. And now they're coding for Netflix while still living on reserve and still living in Kamloops. So this vision that I give to you through the community development part of the tech hub, it's not just something I came up with pie in the sky. It's not something that you can say, we can't do it. Other communities have done it. Next slide, please. I asked Republican House Representative Aaron Pickleton from Arkansas to come up and speak at the conference that we put on here last fall. And it was really fun. He, he, I asked him to come up because he helped the town called Clarksville, Arkansas, go through the same thing that we've went, we're going through, but they started it about ten years ago. And they're coming out the other side and they use a lot of rural innovation, hydrogen. They're guiding hydrogen from farm waste, right? They're building a data center. The funny thing is, the first time they went to get a data center, the utility said, no, you can't do that. Sound familiar? The second time around, they got it. They've, one of the very first things that they did was they did a downtown revitalization and they had a controversy just like us. But they got through it and now they're going. But what he said, I think that, I know Shelley, Counselor Barova, you were there and it really connected with you too. And he said, there's no one in Washington thinking about how to save Clarksville. And other than our, our MP, there's no one, let's say, yes, those who saw the presentation before, let's say there's nobody in the governing party thinking about how to save Estevan. And the point is, so let's save ourselves. And that is one of the ways that the tech hub is a part of that mix. Next slide, please. So what are we doing? Some just highlight stuff. So just an update on the hydrogen project that we unveiled. So a year ago, I had some people from the United States come up and we hosted them in Regina. And they did a presentation at the Crown Investment Corp's office with SAS Power, SAS Energy, trade and investment and others. And one of the things that we're talking about is the hydrogen project. So just at a high level, it's net zero carbon emissions, meaning that because we have CCS, the CO2 that would be produced when producing the hydrogen will just plug into that existing pipe. A little side note, I didn't know this until I did the CCS training with PTRC just a couple of weeks ago. Estevan has the, one of the best places in North America for CCS, not just because of the type of soil we have, but because we're at the bottom of a basin, a geological basin. So why Estevan for this process? Because we, not only because we have the CCS already. Next slide, please. The cool thing about our hydrogen is with, sorry, if you don't know why hydrogen is important, is if you burn hydrogen in a combustion engine, you get energy in the, in motion and you get water. That's it. If you pass hydrogen through a fuel cell, pass a metal, you'll get water and electricity. That's it. But the point is, how do you get that hydrogen? Cause some processes in the, in the world that make hydrogen put as much CO2 in the atmospheres as anything else. And so the, the push in the market had been to use wind and solar, but it's really inefficient. So you get about twenty seven percent of the energy from wind and solar that actually comes out as hydrogen. And therefore you end up with a very high cost of seven dollars, just over seven dollars for that hydrogen. Our process, because we're releasing the energy that's already stored in the coal means that the, that the hydrogen is, they can sell it at a dollar and still make a profit, which is really good for the longevity of this project because the hype cycle of business. So when we hit a downward point, this hydrogen will still be, will still be valuable. Next slide, please. And the great thing about this is not new sky, this is blue sky, this is existing. It's been around forever and a day. It was used in World War Two. China is using it right now. But again, why here? Why now? Is because we have the coal and we have the CCS. Next slide. So the other cool thing about the CO2 is that they can sell the CO2 here because of our existing infrastructure. So they have another revenue stream. So that really makes another reason why it's profitable. Excellent. So big one here is a lot of people and including myself, when the good news came that they're going to keep the coal plants going and a possibility of bringing on a few more boilers, a lot of people were like, oh, so I guess your project is dead. No. I got within a week, two letters from the Crown Investment Court, and they are the ones who are the legal entity of SAS Power. They ultimately have power, control over that coal. And I have two letters from them stating that I can give to an investor that we still have access to the coal and it's still viable. And, and I think that speaks to the, the importance of diversifying our economy on that resource. So if this happens again, we still can keep the coal plant open. We also have existing letters of intent and memorandums of understanding from Westmoreland and others. Next slide. So big one here is agriculture. So John Deere and Case, they both already have hydrogen engines. It's something that's gone through applied research. It's ready to go. But the great thing is using that hydrogen that I was showing you is that a farmer who was using twelve hundred dollars worth of diesel, it will now only cost them a hundred. And that's, I think, the most important piece. We can say, hey, be clean, be green. But if I can, if you can do it and make more money for yourself, I mean, that's the way it will work. So what's new? So we, there's a thing called FEL, front-end loading. It's engineering. So this is not feasibility. It's not new, new technologies existing. It's getting the engineering for the site to make this happen. And there's three, there's FEL one, two and three. So when I lasted a community update, we were finished one, we're now halfway through two. We stalled out because we needed some more capital to pay for it. So we needed a million total to get all engineering done. About three weeks ago, we successfully raised a quarter of a million. The other three quarters of a million is sitting on a desk waiting for someone to sign. We just have to prove to Natural Resources Canada that this is not a greenwashing. Because they're saying, oh, it's coal. Oh, bad. So we are now showing the, the evidence, the science behind this. Through the Argon Labs at the University of Chicago, they have a thing called the GREET. And it's how much carbon dioxide is produced when you make, per kilogram of hydrogen. And our score is clean, as clean as wind and solar. So going through that process and I, I welcome that process because I knew what was going to happen and I'm glad to have it happening now. Spinoff. So one of the things considering that we might have to find new, we'll see what happens with the free trade agreement, but one of the spinoffs is they can produce electricity from this hydrogen from a fuel cell for six to eight cents a kilowatt hour. Data centers are very excited about that idea. So that's an opportunity. And the other is we can island, so not being a part of the larger grid, but we can bring in other manufacturers who want clean, cheap electricity. One opportunity is the graphite process. So this is the city of Estevan's Economic Development Council that's a part of this. I'm playing a role in the sense of bringing in the marketing and the venture capital and things like that. So I thought I'd just give a quick opportunity on an update on that. Next slide. So working with Dr. Wagner from the University of George Washington, funny thing, I just got his resume for the conference we were doing. And again, another person who comes into our community connected to MIT. So he did his postdoc studies with MIT, like Dr. Eric Grinson from here. It's interesting. Okay, moving on to the next slide. So what are they doing? They're using, they had been using one kilowatt lasers to zap our lignite coal, turning it into graphite. The reason why our coal is so useful is our coal is barely being fossilized peat. It still has the organic structure of peat. That's, structure is important. So that when you zap it with a laser, that structure continues through and you still have graphite. Without that structure, you just got a pot of carb, of carbon dust. So that's why it's important. We're now using twelve kilowatt lasers. Those are what are commercially viable, available and commercial availability optics to go with those lasers. So essentially we're working on, on getting the data to build a proper reactor. We don't think nuclear, it's just the term reactor. Okay, next slide. And then the other great thing is, so over the last few years, I've been hosting two SMR supply chain conferences. I underline supply chain, not SMR conferences. The idea being that the oil and gas manufacturing industry that exists in Southeast Saskatchewan, they're ninety five to ninety nine percent of the way there in their skills and capabilities to make parts for an SMR. And this isn't just the GBWRX three hundred that's going to be built here. It's also the Westinghouse AP three hundred, I think it is called. They all need parts. So I am now on, I am representing our region on the steering committee for the SMR supply chain, just to give that voice. A good example is something did come up where they said, we needed to do this in Saskatoon. And I'm like, well, where are your existing power engineers? What high school in Saskatoon or Saskatchewan has students actually thinking about working in a nuclear reactor estimate? And so just have, being that voice for the community to get that going. One thing I have put in is an application for funding to the federal government to do a SMR audit of our region to see what gaps we may have to make those parts. But I just want to iterate, this isn't me representing or the, the tech hub representing SAS Power's decision to do an SMR. That's between them. With or without the SMR being built in here, we will still be working on building a supply chain. It's just such a good opportunity. So plans for twenty twenty five? So speaking of our coal to graphite project, graphite is a critical mineral. China controls seventy six percent of all graphite in the world and they put on a tariff, export tariff. Basically you can't get graphite out of China without, you know, a struggle. So, and that's because they know that's a key ingredient in the newer economy that's emerging. So there is a real need for this graphite. So with Dr. Wagner doing so well, he's going to come up to our city and do a presentation on April twenty third. And that then became a whole conference where we got Zach Maurer from Arizona Lithium giving an update on how they're shipping lithium carbonate out of our region. We have a person from the U of R who's finished and working with SAS Power on, finished research and working with SAS Power on getting critical minerals out of our fly ash. It's been around, but they're, they're now moving to the next step. We've got SRC Saskatchewan Research Council doing a presentation on their rare earth processing facility they have. Rare earth is a critical mineral. It's just a fancy word from maintenance. That's all that is. So I welcome all of you to please come. There's going to be people coming from the United States and right across Canada and hopefully further afield. And then building on our success from last year, and you know, they always try to make your next conference better than your first. So we got quite the challenge on this one, but we will be doing the, we will be doing the ICE Rural Conference again. I might move it up one week just because there could be a conflict with another conference. Just stay tuned. We'll be focusing on energy a lot as usual. Just again, every molecule, every electron in the energy sector comes from a rural community, not just us, right around the world. So really talking about that and education. And I'm throwing my net further afield. I'm already talking to a community in Western Australia to have them come out and some contacts I made in Europe and Malaysia, again, just to get that through. So, next slide. But, and oh, sorry. And the last piece is startup support. So the core goal of, of the tech hub was to help startups grow. There's just so much going on. So I put out feelers to different, or proposals to different corporations asking for funding to help with this. So if you know anybody who is willing to help fund that, let me know. That includes another second pitch competition that I'd love to do. It's, but here's the big one. So I really need the community's support a lot, right? If I'm going to, if it's a tech hub and Tanya from the college and I are standing up in front of the DM, the Deputy Minister of Natural Resources Canada and saying, you can use coal, it's not greenwashing, or talking to advanced education saying, we want computer science here, or all these other wonderful things we're doing for the community. We need to be able to say, we have this X number of people who became a rural innovator for us. It's not a moneymaker. Right now, we, we just, it's twenty five bucks to be an individual, a hundred dollars to be business. And it's just rural innovator, just to say, we have these people. They bought into what we're doing. They support us. So if you could pass that message around, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Excellent. Good stuff.
Thank you worship and thank you Gord for coming and for discussing everything that you've been doing over there at the tech hub. That's awesome. Also, I was just going to say with Aaron Pickleton, something he talked about was being a community cheerleader. And that is so important so that everybody that lives in Estevan, works in Estevan, comes to Estevan. When they talk about Estevan, we need everybody to be a cheerleader for our community because it just continues to build our community, the strength that's within here. And then the other thing is that computer science course was so gave confidence to a few of the students to go on to another course at a different tech school. And you know, I think that's just what we do. Sometimes people, it's hard for them to leave their community. So if they can take their first year here or take a course like the computer science one and then get that confidence to go on and do a two or three or four year degree, it's excellent. So just yeah, thank you so much for what you're doing over there.
You're bothering with, oh, my button, my button. The, so you, you talked about the, the grade of the coal that we have. Thank you. Talked about the grade of the coal that we have because you get different grades of graphite from different grades of coal with different uses, or is it all basically come out the same?
Thank you for the question, Counsel Elliot. The different grade of coal gets, you have to tweak the reactor on how, and, and the process before that to get it to the point where you can then make graphite. At the other side of the coin, you can tweak the reactor to make different grades of graphite. So you, you know, graphite as a lubricant, graphite in your pencil, graphite in, in a nuclear reactor. I don't know. I don't know if we've talked about that one yet. Yeah.
Well, thank you for coming to present tonight, keeping us updated and keep the disruption going. Thank you. You have a motion? Oh, we have a motion to accept Gord's presentation. Counselor Johnson, Counsel Elliot, all in favor? Very. Excellent. Up next, we have the SUMA membership invoice, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. We have a motion to accept this. Counselor Johnson, Counselor Leeser. All any questions, comments? All in favor? Oh, sorry, Counsel Leeser.
I just wanted to speak to the importance of being a SUMA member. All of the urban municipalities that includes cities, towns, villages and resort villages opt to join together using an advocacy group to petition the government on matters that affect us the most. So recently the focus has been on ensuring that social issues that are under the responsibility of the provincial government do not spill over and impact the municipalities. And also that infrastructure, the municipalities are responsible for billions of dollars of infrastructure. And being a member of SUMA and of the federal counterpart FCM allow us to advocate for those partnership programs that have brought lots of different infrastructure projects and provincial and federal dollars to Estevan.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Any other comments, questions? All in favor? Carry. Up next, Creighton Lodge, annual spring fundraising event sponsorship. Oh, I was going to ask you about it.
I'll let our rep, Counselor Johnson.
They noted that Counselor Barova is leaving the chamber. Counselor John, well, I guess, do we have a motion to accept? I guess we don't, we're accepting it. Counselor Johnson.
I'll make a motion to accept this correspondence from Creighton Lodge. January here this evening for this annual spring fundraising event sponsorship.
Okay. Do we have a second, Counsel? No?
A question. Do you have a recommendation on how we support their request?
Well, surprise, surprise. We normally purchase a table for this event.
We've, yeah, it's basically something that has just been mentioned here. We can do a number of things. There's a cash donation or purchase a ticket ourselves individually or for anybody in the, in the group or in the community. You can purchase a ticket from the Creighton Lodge for this fundraiser. Fundraiser basically is, I'll let, I'm going to read this memo because it's important. Creighton Lodge is Level One and Level Two, assisted living complex owned and by five rural municipalities. The RM of Estevan, the RM of Simmer and the RM of Coalfields, the RM of Benson and the RM of Cambria with the support of the city of Estevan. And I'm on that board also with Counselor Barova. We are very proud of the excellent home we provide for the seniors of Southeast Saskatchewan and the continual plan to ensure we are here for many more years. Our annual fundraiser provides funding for our capital projects. Our current project is a kitchen expansion slated to start in the spring of twenty twenty five. Projects like this couldn't be completed without your support. Our, our annual, annual spring fundraising event will be held on April twenty sixth, twenty twenty five at the Power Dodge Curling Center. This year we are going back to our roots with a night of live music by the Uncoolus along with your choice to bid on exclusive, exclusive packages in our live auction. So there's many different things there. Cash donation, I mentioned, or purchase a ticket or sponsor the event. Or we can donate a prize to this organization. We see that, you know, we have something that we can donate for the auction, the live auction. And it says to get involved or to purchase tickets, to call Shelley at three oh six, six three four, four one five four. That's at Creighton Lodge. Also they'll be selling tickets and it's a fundraiser. And we have the drawings drafted up right now for this project. It's in the process right now, going out for tenders. We're seeking a contractor to come to give us a good quote. And we're excited about this project. It's going to be a kitchen, a new kitchen expansion going on to the east end of Creighton Lodge. So, so really well thought out plan. I've looked at a lot of the drawings and it's really exciting for the community. It's going to help us out a lot there. And so if there's anything that we need to be looking at, typically with our involvement as the city of Estevan, if we're interested in purchasing a table, I would encourage us to take a look at that. A table of eight is eight hundred dollars. But you see there, it's in the purple purchase a ticket selection. So I'll leave it up to city council and let them decide on what we should be doing. let them decide on what we should be doing at this time. And that's my uh discussion on the matter. So.
Counselor Leeser.
Um, a question to follow up on the kitchen expansion. At one time, there was discussion that that would not only meet the needs of those people living in Creighton Lodge, but would allow for members from the community to also purchase from Creighton Lodge. Is that still the plan?
Boy, oh boy. I, that's a good question. I I know uh with the expansion that uh I think that's something that I can't answer. At this time, we're gonna have to get more information on that. Get back to uh Counselor Leeser.
Excellent. Motion to accept. We have a second, your counsel.
Could we ask Counselor Roba in her capacity as the lodge manager, what the intention of the kitchen expansion is before I make a motion on how we support it?
This is getting pretty complicated, man. Yes. Let's, can we, can we table that discussion?
To me, how we support them would depend on if it's for the benefit of the fifty two residents in the lodge or if it's for the benefit of potentially more members of the community. So I would like to know before we decide how we sponsor the event.
Can I just answer, respond to that question? Um, back to Counselor Leeser. I I feel that most of the meals that are prepared are for all of the uh individuals that were requesting meals be supplied for their uh residents in Creighton Lodge. Now, I can be wrong in mentioning that maybe Meals on Wheels or something like that picks up some of the meals and and distributes some around the community uh to other places. Uh, but that's something that uh I'm not aware of that is being offered. So I think it's basically for all of those people that are seniors at the home presently. It's gonna be more of a better convenience and a larger space for them to operate with. So, thank you.
Okay, so can you bring in Counselor Roba, Counselor? Counselor Leeser has a question for you.
Counselor Roba, in our discussion of how the City of Estevan is going to financially support this fundraiser, my question was, is the purpose of the expansion only to feed those seniors currently living in the lodge? Or is the expansion also for the benefit of the surrounding community?
Thank you for the question, Counselor. All these are, so yes, our expansion right now, we currently have fifty two residents in the building. And so what our goal is, is to have an outreach program because we have more and more requests. We have a waiting list right now of two hundred and thirty nine people. So we have requests not only for rooms, but because people also need to be fed. So currently, the only other program we have in Estevan is the um Meals on Wheels program. You have to be assessed. And right now, I believe they're at full capacity. So there's a lot of seniors who cannot cook for themselves. So that will be our next goal. Once the kitchen is built, which we're, we actually are a tender right now, uh people can bid on that project. Then we're gonna build it. Uh, once it's built, then we'll look at the outreach program. We'll probably start, we actually have one person right now that comes for his himself and his wife, and they pick up meals every day. And then we'll start with some freezer meals. We have done that before in the past. And we'll also look at a delivery service in the future. So that will all start rolling. Once we get the kitchen built, then we'll put the uh staff in place. Then we'll look at the outreach program. So there's a lot of different things that will be coming down the pipe in the next upcoming year or to two years. But yes, it's definitely for the community.
Other questions for Counselor Roba? See none? Call you back in a second. Current area of motion to accept sponsor for.
I will second the motion to accept the report as presented.
Okay, all in favor? Eric.
As this is for the benefit of the surrounding community, and there is a outstanding need for access to um home-cooked meals for the seniors in our community, I would like to see the City of Estevan sponsor the event for two thousand five hundred dollars.
You have a second, or? Counselor Dubowski, questions, comments? All in favor? Oh, some else?
Yeah, thank you, uh, Your Honor. Um, I'm in favor of that. I think that's a really good idea because, like you say, it's it's for the benefit of the entire community. Uh, maybe, maybe one of us later on, who knows, right? And I think that's a very good idea that we do that. Thank you.
Good. Any other questions, comments? All in favor? Eric, sponsor the event. Um, can you let Counselor Grover back in? Next, we have our Suma Resolution Recommendation. They didn't like our resolutions. Josh, can you give us a little rundown? I just know you were dealing with those.
Thank you, worship. Uh, through your worship to all of council, uh, we were instructed to reach out to Suma pertaining to a resolution that will be on the floor at the convention later on in the year. Uh, they were kind enough to give us some feedback. Uh, from Suma's perspective, their concern is that our operative clause, which is the very last part of the resolution, might implicitly uh come across that the city and other urban cities, uh municipalities are accepting the responsibilities that are being downloaded from uh the Government of Saskatchewan. So Suma's perspective is that uh we're unfairly being burdened with this responsibility, and they would like to see the Government of Saskatchewan bear said responsibility. And they gave us some feedback in the operative laws, which needs to be presented to council. And whatever feedback council gives, uh, we will just respond to Suma in kind with whatever direction council tells us to let them know.
Okay. Questions or comments on this?
The suggested revisions provided by Sean McKenzie on February fifth do clearly delineate the provincial responsibility from the municipalities while also advocating for municipalities to be participants in the conversation of how it's ruled out within our communities. And I think that is where the value lies, is that we need to have local leaders in conjunction with provincial funding, looking at how we can um address these challenges in our community. So I'll make the recommendation that we accept the operative clause as presented.
His comments, all in favor? Eric, is that a?
Yeah, I I'm just still trying to wrap my head around this, my head around this wording. It's, it seems like it's putting us back into the same place that he's saying we don't wanna be in. Um, with municipalities on the deployment of mental health and social services resources to ensure the delivery of these services. So is that the municipality deploying mental health and social services resources or municipality ensuring the delivery? Or where does this state that that the municipality is not the one responsible then, that it's still on the Government of Saskatchewan would be my question?
Counselor Leeser? Can you send the insight on to that?
Uh, my interpretation of the clause as it stands is that the sentence immediately proceeding indicates that it's their responsibility. So it says, therefore be it resolved, Suma advocate the Government of Saskatchewan to increase provincial funding for mental health supports and social services to alleviate the downloaded burden on local resources. And be it, further be it resolved that Suma advocate the Government of Saskatchewan to commit to ongoing collaboration with municipalities. That's where I think the delineation is. So we're asking that they work with us. Not that they allow the responsibility to fall to us. So in my opinion, they're separate enough that I'm comfortable proceeding as is.
Thank you, your worship. Um, I guess for me, it's the word collaboration that says we're walking hand in hand on this. Um, not they're supplying everything and we help, but if, I I trust your judgment, Counselor Leeser, so if, I I'll, I'll go with you on this.
Excellent. We voted, we're good to go. Up next, written reports of committees, Estevan Public Library Minutes, January twenty one, twenty twenty five. We have a motion to accept the public library's notes. Counselor Dubowski, second by, also Mouse, any questions, comments, all in favor? Eric. Executive reports, marketing communications, leisure center, display, screen. I see Jacqueline stepping up to the mic. Can you uh give us an update on?
Yeah, so um on the fourteenth, our electronic media board that's outside. I was afraid of buzzing like over here. Um, on the fourteenth, our electronic media board outside of um the leisure center went down completely. Um, so we had done some troubleshooting where we remotely diagnosed the fact that it was our controller that is no longer of use. It might as well be keeping your papers down because that's about as useful as it is currently. So to give a little bit of perspective, our current resolution on that board is five forty by two forty. Our, the average, um, or the most recent iPhone is a two thousand five hundred and fifty six by one thousand one hundred and seventy nine resolution, um, just to give a little bit of perspective. Um, so the, what we had done was that we had got a quote in order for it to be um installed, the new one. So the quote as seen in the report is with the two-sided uh display as well as the installation uh plus applicable taxes. Um, so really looking to refer here how we want to proceed. Um, whether we're looking to replace it, um, being that we do know the part, um, which is not usable anymore. Um, we can also look at that particular channel. It's just, um, the rest of the board has, we have no idea the lifespan of it. This is a twenty, it was installed in twenty sixteen. It was a twenty fifteen model. So we are looking at a ten-year-old board currently.
Um, I'll just read through the recommendation. I recommend replacing the current display with more modern, up-to-date model. Upgrading to a new display will not only provide a more reliable and efficient advertising solution, but also enhance the overall functionality of the system. A new display will allow for higher quality visuals, offering more effective platform, promoting leisure services and other community-related advertisements. Additionally, the upgrade will contribute to the revitalization revitalization of the facility's outward appearance, ensuring it aligns with current standards and reflects commitment to maintaining a contemporary professional image for visitors and users of the facility. Do we have a motion out there? Counselor Dubowski, motion to replace screens?
Oh, um. I have a question on.
We'll look for a motion first. We'll get the second or? The motion, Counselor Johnson?
All motion, but uh.
Good. We have a second or? Also, Mouse, questions or concerns? Counselor Dubowski?
Uh, thank you, worship. Um, question for Jacqueline. With the current one, you said the pixelation is really a low-quality resolution. Do we know what model we'd be looking at if we were to replace this and what the comparative resolution of that model would be?
Yeah, so the what we would have it have it replaced with is current up to standards of what we would look at as it would be current to say your iPhone screen, which was also be basically what we're used to in terms of using social media, available to have four K video, all of those types of things. It would also have uh remote access as does our current one.
All in favor? Questions, comments, Counselor Elliot?
Uh, thank you, your worship. Uh, we we haven't passed the city budget yet. Isn't this something that the leisure center should be trying to work into the budget that they asked for? Or if not amend their request before we get to passing that?
Thank you, Richard Counselor. Uh, yes, correct. So this is something that's come up since the budget had been presented to council. Uh, so we thought instead of springing it at the final uh days of the budget, we bring it to council for open discussion at this point, that if we wanted to add it to the budget. So uh if council would like to uh approve its uh upgrade, but keeping it within kind of the approved budget, that will be a motion. Or if they want to approve for the upgrade in addition to what was already presented at budget, those are the two different factors. So uh, I guess council will have to decide what they'd like to do there.
Yeah, I think just basically, um, even from the comments that have been about the graininess of it. And it is a very nice sign to have out there, and it's utilized quite a lot. Um, I think it should just be moved into the budget and see if we can find it within the leisure center budget. And if it can't be, then I think that's when we need to maybe look at this because just thinking about a couple of the different projects that we have going on over there. And quite often what happens is we proceed with these projects, but then they don't always all get completed within the first year, the budget year, so they get moved over to next year's budget anyways. So I do think we could find the fifty two thousand dollars in the leisure center budget.
Thank you. Thank you, worship, Counselor Roba. So I know when we had our open houses, there were some other recommendations for project they'd like to see in the budget. So at the next council meeting where we had planned to pass the budget, we could bring a list of uh those changes uh and see if council would like to move forward with them or try to fit into existing amounts. Uh, and this can be one of those items for discussion.
So Johnson?
Yeah, Mayor Surrick, uh, I just would like to mention that this item should have been in the twenty twenty five budget. Guess it just failed on us now. So um, if there's anything that we can do to uh, once we get that old sign down, just to make a good evaluation of it, that we can't use it anywhere else in the system, in the city. Those two parts, there are monitors. And if it's really that bad, we've got some work there to do, as you know, like you don't today. But uh, I'm for uh making full advertisement of that building. And all the users need to see what's happening in that building, their main building in the City of Estevan. And we've got such a choice location for this monitor on both sides there. So I think it's has extreme value for uh people in the City of Estevan and visitors. So we have no problem. Put her in the budget.
We have a motion, we have a second or any comments, questions, all good?
The motion that I made was to basically include it in the budget. And if it can be found within the um leisure services budget that we have right now, which means looking at one of the other projects and saying, you know what, this is more important than that project, that would be the best. And if not, then when this comes to budget, it will be added in.
We have a second or? All in favor? Best, you recommend motion to send it to budget. Which we will deal with next meeting. Up next, January twenty five, monthly water quality report. Matt, I see you in the crowd there. Do you have anything down? Good, good. We have a motion to accept the monthly water quality report. Counselor Leeser, Counselor Johnson. Questions, comments, all in favor? Oh, sorry.
Counselor Johnson. Sir, you said Matt is in the audience? Oh, there he is. He's on the bench. Okay, good.
So, Martin, okay, Matt? So it's nice to see, especially with this report that we're uh working towards with the water plant operators. Over the past month, they've been working hard at reducing the amount of aluminum into the distribution system uh with adjustments on chemical dosages and frequencies and testing. So that's a very good point. That's excellent. And uh, that's good for our community. That's good to see. That's a very good note. And you're saving maybe on costs on on expenditure of this chemical, winter aluminum, alum.
And you're saving maybe on costs on on expenditure of this chemical, winter aluminum alum. And uh maybe if you can just tell us what that product actually does for water treatment at the city of Esteban. And uh what levels basically uh is is the safe level to be at, if you know that, that's great. For this uh chemical.
Uh yeah, thank you, through your worship, uh Counselor Johnson. Uh so yeah, the winter alum is used uh in change from the summer alum. Because summer alum obviously doesn't work in colder water temperatures. But it basically is just a flocculant that helps coagulate all the solids together in the clarifier, which helps follow before goes through our filters. Um it's very important in the process and it's uh good to see our operators in there challenging themselves to try and see what they can drop. Some of our levels to to uh reduce costs, but also reduce the amount of chemical that we're having to use to. Get our water quality to where it where it needs to be.
And uh just back at you there, Matt, I think uh there's a point two parts per million, that's uh. Somewhere I've read, that's uh kind of like a good value to be at lower than that level. But uh it fluctuates too throughout the year, like you said. But uh that's good information, that's good to see, and it's good that we're taking on these uh challenges and changes and obviously positive things for the community. Thank you, Matt.
Water is important, big time. You had a motion, a secondary, all favorite, report, carried, thank you, Matt, up next. Build in current report for January twenty twenty five, we have a motion to accept this. Also the ghost keep on some mouse, questions, comments, you have none, all in favor? Gary. Uh fire reports, can we get them all in one morning? All right. So fire reports for September, October, November, December, twenty twenty four and year and totals. We have a motion to accept the reports, Counsel Johnson, also Dubowski, questions, comments, Counsel Johnson.
Yeah, I'm here, Sir, I just have a question and it was brought up uh once again in our capital budget. And also with our twenty twenty five uh city budget. We ask for and uh something that uh was is definitely needed in the city of Esteban is more fire inspections. And uh I'm not too sure where we're at right now, but maybe the city manager can um let us know if he's had any discussions with the fire chief on this matter. And if that's the case, then with uh reporting back to us on city council. I look at these reports and I see all of the lines are filled out, so is there going to be a separate line there that we see for fire inspections on on uh reporting back to us on city council? Thank you.
Uh your worship to Counsel Johnson, so uh yes, I've been in discussion uh with fire after our uh initial uh meeting on budget day. Uh and I will be providing the report at the next uh meeting. Uh and I think that's something that I can get the deputy and the fire chief to put together in the report, that it would be separate and inspections would have its own kind of reporting in that. In that area, um they have put some kind of cost together for that uh additional position to continue fire inspection, so that will be coming at the next meeting.
Thank you, city manager, that's all my questions, thanks.
All in favor of the layer reports? Well, next, land development annual report. Richard, I know you're excited to tell us all about this fabulous report. The floor is yours.
Thank you, mayor and council, yes, um. One of the features that we put into the official community plan and. Uh when it was last adopted, twenty twenty three, I think, it was um. In addition to having policies and directives for what we want to achieve over the next ten years. We also put a requirement in there that land development services has to give an annual report to council on what progress we're making. So uh what this does is gives you a bit of an overview of what has been happening in the department. You can see, for example, for development permits, we set an all time record here uh going back twenty seventeen. With uh ninety two permits, he was hoping we'd maybe get up to a hundred this year. Subdivision activity has been kind of uh mediocre at best here, there hasn't been a whole lot done. Last year, we had fewer zoning uh changes being proposed. Building function, now this is something that should be highlighted, I believe, going back to twenty nineteen. Uh we have again a record, now of course, as you can imagine, these numbers are not inflation adjusted. But ten point eight million in in the construction value in twenty twenty four, I would say is substantially more than. Two point oh million in twenty nineteen, so I think that is something to be really positive about. For projects and major activities, there hasn't been too terribly much uh going on in terms of trails. Being built and and what have you, although one thing that we can look through is business licensing. Uh again, since the uh business license by law was first put in, I believe, twenty seventeen. Again, we have an all time record for number of businesses operating in the city and you can see uh from distribution there. Uh by far, the most nu- the highest number is commercial in city. Um for commercial out of city, uh you'll see it's down a little bit, some of that, again, good news, we had people. Actually putting storefronts in the city, moving here from other communities rather than being outsiders. So that's pretty good too, um. One thing that we're looking at doing again in twenty twenty five, and that's on page five. Is uh redoing a assessment on downtown vacancy rates and what kind of. Businesses we have there, um from the research that was done. It looks like um the healthy mix is almost something in the area of sixty percent. Food and entertainment, forty percent shopping, uh it used to be, say, even back in the nineteen eighties. For example, if you went to a mall, you would go there for the uh the shopping and then perhaps. You don't want to go home yet, so you might have a meal or go to a movie, it's completely flipped around nowadays, it's. The entertainment is your major draw, now you go for the movie theater, but you arrive there early. There's a store nearby, might as well spend some time there rather than uh sitting around waiting. So we'll be able to monitor from twenty twenty two, probably redo that in twenty twenty five. And to give you uh an idea of where our trends are. And with that, uh mayor and council, any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, worship, um I just had one comment on in your report, I believe it's under twenty twenty one, a dog park facility at Hillcrest Park. That should have been hillside park, right? Okay, just wanted to clarify that there wasn't another dog park.
No.
Over in the Hillcrest area that I was unaware of, my dogs would be quite mad if I was going to shoot one. So I I was pretty confident with the outside, but I just wanted to make sure. The other question I have is, in your home based businesses, do you have an idea of how many home based daycares? Or people operating um daycares, not ones that are regulated under ten dollar day daycare, but just actual people running day homes in their home?
I've got business licenses and permits issued for four, I believe. I've been led to believe that the actual number is in the low twenties.
And so what is the cost of somebody who's looking at getting a business license for their day home? What is the cost? Because I think sometimes it's a perceived perception out there of a higher cost than what it actually is. So I'm just curious, if you know off the top of your head, what a day home per a licensed person would pay for business license?
Okay, the um for the business license, uh we have two categories. If you're running a home based business and you don't have clients coming to the door, it's seventy five dollars a year. If you do have clients coming to the door, it's three hundred dollars a year and day homes should be in that category.
So a day home will cost three hundred dollars per year. Um what are the benefits for a day home to come forward and get a business license?
One of the benefits, I believe, is uh and and this happened last year. If they have their license, when we get uh comments or concerns from the neighborhood community. Uh we can say that they're licensed and what have you. Uh another benefit potentially, and and this has happened, we've had uh last year, I think, in two situations. Uh part of the process for getting your business license is you get a fire inspection. And so the parents of children who are at that day home can be assured that. The uh home is uh up to codes uh with respect to fire control. Uh we've had a couple cases there last year where there had to be improvements made in order for that to happen.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments out there? Do we have a motion to accept, Counsel most still?
Your worship, I have one question on the uh, again, on the planning projects, uh possible or planning documents. Possible preparation of a neighborhood plan for the land east of the composite school is a comprehensive. And or com-.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Type or that's all.
There there is a proposal, uh previous council is dealing with this quite extensively for a biomass plant. Uh rezoning was done, there was a subdivision approved in principle, we haven't sent surveyors out.
Again, on the planning projects, uh possible or planning documents, possible preparation of a neighborhood plan for the land east of the composite. School is a comprehensive. Mint or com-.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Type or that's all.
There there is a proposal, uh previous council is dealing with this quite extensively for a biomass plant. Uh rezoning was done, there is a subdivision approved in principle, we haven't sent surveyors out. Uh if that project does come to be, then the neighborhood plan has to be put into place. We have to look at how that entire quarter section will be serviced, for example, and what kind of land uses would be in there.
So that's a comprehensive school, not a comprehensive school, that's just a.
The comprehensive school, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, worship, I'll make the motion to accept the document as presented.
Thank you for that, second there, Counsel Dubowski, all in favor? Karen, thank you, Richard. Uh next, introduction of bylaws, we have four of them, which are all first reading. To reminder, first reading, we're just looking for motions, seconders and get it out to the public and then uh second, third readings, we can ask all of our. Questions, we're dying to ask, so up first bylaw, twenty twenty five dash twenty eighty eight. Amending zone for subdivision, mergelod railway spur municipal reserve bylaw. The city has recently entered into a contractual agreement with Mergalot Steel and Metals for the per- purchase of a portion of some city owned lands. For the purpose of connecting the main line of CP rail to the mergelod property within the R M Esteban. So again, at this time, it is recommended that council approve the first reading, get it out in public. And uh schedule a public hearing, motion, Counsel Roba, seconded by Counsel Johnson, all in favor? You have to wait till second or third reading. I didn't make the law. All in favor, Karen, well, get, write your questions down for next meeting. Um so up next, counselor, counsel, bylaw twenty twenty five, two thousand and eighty nine. Uh unclaimed personal property, uh again, personal property. Uh the purpose of this bylaw is to provide for the disposition of lost and unclaimed personal property in the possession of the city. So again, it is recommended, give this first reading, get it held to the public. And uh get some public consultation on it, we have a motion to accept this one, Counsel Johnson and Counsel Dubowski, all in favor? Carrie, we'll get that one out there. Up next, bylaw twenty twenty five, twenty ninety, road closure bylaw for Drater Street. So the city of Esteban is commencing with the intent to create additional residential properties on the east portion of Drater Street. Purpose of this submission is to introduce the road closure bylaw so that Drater Street will have uniform width. Again, first reading, looking for a motion in the secondary, Counsel Mouse, Counsel Dubowski, all in favor? Carrie, get that one out in the public. Up next, bylaw twenty twenty five dash twenty ninety one. Uh this one again involves Drater Street expansion, rezoning. The city of Esteban is commencing with the intent to create additional residential properties on the east portion of Drater Street. Purpose of this submission is to introduce rezoning application, so the additional lands can be zoned from agricultural district to residential. Estate district, again, first reading, do we have a motion to get that out there, Counsel Johnson? Seconded by Counsel Dubowski, all in favor? Carrie, sorry, Counsel Elliot, I see you just. All right, we move through those, uh we're up on into inquiries, Counsel Roba.
Thank you, worship, uh first one I have is our community games night with the Esteban Wellness Committee will be held at the Esteban Comprehensive School. On the third Tuesday, which is Tuesday, February eighteenth this month, and that'll be going right up until June, the third Tuesday of every month. And the whole purpose of that is to just get the community together, it's a free event. Show up at the comp and it's at the back door number seven, I believe. It can be a little dark back there, don't be intimidated, just park and come in, if you need a ride, contact the Esteban Community Wellness Committee Facebook page. And we'll try and arrange a ride, uh just show up and bring a game if you like, or just come and play one of the games we have there. The other thing is, I heard back a reply from the traffic board, and I believe I had talked about it before. And it was a concern that had gone to the traffic board regarding the crosswalk and the danger situation that happens sometimes. There was a couple of people that had near misses and one that actually was hit, so that inquiry went through, but they checked it out and the light is good. So it's all good, but they may change to LED lights, and so sometimes that happens when we do an inquiry and it goes to the traffic board and it comes back as there's no issues. Um so I just want to caution people to be aware that that light, sometimes when the sun is shining down, it can be hard to see, but there are kids and a lot of people that use that intersection. So please just watch out when you're traveling down Fourth Street and you hit the Fourteenth Avenue intersection.
For sure, near lights will help that out.
Yes, Mayor Sernic, uh I have a few, I guess, inquiries. And to the city manager, if I could get a report from uh, I guess, leisure services, dealing with the squash courts over at Definity Place. I'm I'm asking for a report on the the usage of the squash squash courts and uh. How active uh do we have a group uh using them as uh for squash, if they can. Give me that information or the use for other purposes, uh I go by there quite often and uh it just, the whole wall just seems. Uh very uh unused with those two squash courts there, and if there's something else that we can do with either opening it up. For uh usage for other, I'm gonna say, community involvement or uh the arts council or whatever. Uh possibility could be there that it could be used uh by them. And uh without sending that group, I mean, there's two ports there, we could probably uh, you know, communicate that and uh work around that with our. I'm gonna say our scheduling, and the other questionnaire or inquiry I have is um. Basically parking, and and I've noted it basically as um being over at the. Affinity Place Leisure Services there, the walking track, it's it's really being heavily used by moms. Uh that are young mothers with their infants or young uh women that are expecting. And uh they're using the walking track for exercise and sometimes in this cold weather, they have to park in the parking lot at uh fair distance away. And what they have in other centers and other communities is they've posted signage. Uh basically, right where we have our uh signs that are maybe in blue for parking, handicap parking. But they've converted a few of those stalls over to uh have signage for uh women that are expecting babies. Or mothers that uh, you know, can use them, and they have quick access basically to enter the building. Uh and and stuff like that, now, it's just something to be considered, I mean, I've seen it. I've seen it uh over at Walmart today, there's one signer there in the parking lot. That stall is used for uh that purpose, but it's it's something that we can consider looking at and maybe bringing it back to uh council as uh. The discussion, it's an inquiry that I have because there's so many, so many uh young ladies that are over there using that. For that purpose, okay, thank you.
Awesome, thank you, Counsel Leeser.
Just to note that the two open houses.
Just to note that the two open houses for the community to come out and ask questions about the city's proposed budget are both now done. So thank you to the community for coming out. And for everyone that has submitted questions this far, um you haven't missed out yet. There's still the opportunity to provide feedback on the budget as proposed until Friday, the fourteenth, and that can be done in writing or by calling City Hall. So certainly I encourage the community to take a look at the budget as it stands. And if there are projects that they identify as priorities, to share them with us. Thank you.
Thank you, worship. I do have just one thing. So we have this new public notice policy. So all the bylaws that were posted tonight, they will be posted on our bulletin boards, they will be on our socials, on our webpage and on the Gazette, just so everybody's aware of where to look for that information. Okay?
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to add to the open houses. So there was actually people that showed up to them, so a little golf clap for that. And I just want to thank council for spending their time on that. Yeah, there's gonna be more in the future. All good. Do we have a motion to move into committee? Counsel Leeser, Counsel Mouse, all in favor? We are moving into committee.